Okay, it is 5:30, so we will go ahead and convene the Wednesday, March 6, 2024 Planning Commission meeting. Ms. Ruth, would you like to call roll?
Thank you, Chairman. Chairman Miller?
Here.
Vice Chairman York?
Here.
Commissioner Mandela is absent. Commissioner Salazar Garza?
Here.
Commissioner Munoz?
Here.
Commissioner Mottagi?
Here.
Commissioner Lerma?
Here.
Commissioner Hedrick?
Here.
Commissioner Bud?
Here.
We have a quorum to conduct the meeting.
Okay, with that, I'll... Is there a necessity to read in the rules? Go ahead and read in the rules of decorum on the public comment.
Thank you. Citizens will be allowed to tend to make public comments in person at city planning commission meetings. The public is invited to speak on any agenda item and any other items that pertain to the planning commission. Comments are limited to three minutes. If you choose to speak during this period, you will not be allowed to speak again when the specific item is being considered in order of the agenda.
All right, with that, I'll open up the public comment for anything not pertaining to any specific agenda items. And I don't see anybody in attendance that's not staff, so I'll go ahead and close the public comment and move on to the approval of absences.
I'll make a motion that we approve absences for, what, February 21st?
I second it.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to the approval of minutes.
Move that we approve the minutes from the February 21st meeting.
Take it.
There is a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on to the consent, public hearing, discussion, and possible action, A and B. Or item A.
Good evening, commissioners. Mark Roscoe, Planner 3 with Development Services. Be reading into record consent items. Discussion on possible action, item A, Platts. Item number one is a conditional approval for Gateway Park, Block 1, Lot 4R. It's a replat of .35 acres. This plat is located at the east end of Knickerbocker Drive and east of Laguna Shores Road. Item number two. Flower Bluff Estates, Block C, Lot 10R, is a replat of 1.52 acres, located north of NAS Drive and west of West Lakeside Drive. Both Plats, both items and both Platts have met the TRC comments and meet the Texas Local Government Code. Staff is recommending approval for both Platts.
Thank you. Does anybody, any commissioners have questions for staff on items one or two? I see none. So I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing for the consent agenda. Would anyone like to speak on that? Nobody has shown up, so I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to item B, plat with a waiver.
Open up presentation? I thought you could present. I know you want to open this one. Okay.
Okay, Bria Whitmire, Development Services Engineer. So, this is for a plat waiver for sidewalk construction for Flower Bluff Estates, Block C, Lot 10R. So, I'm going to kick out of this to get, I think I actually have the PowerPoint down here, too. Yeah, that'll look better. So, aerial view, this is the plat that was just approved for along, so, West Lakeside, right off of NAS. So, the property, of course, by UDC must comply with the subdivision design for the final plat approval, which includes the sidewalk. Sidewalk construction must follow the design standards, allowing neighboring properties to extend at the development. So, the nearest sidewalk is along NAS. It's 500 feet from the farthest point. It's about 167 feet from the nearest point, from the property, to the connecting sidewalk. There's also, I'll get to that on the next slide. So, criteria for administrative exception, trying to save us paperwork wherever we can. There's a long list of exceptions, but this property in particular does not meet any of those exceptions. Thus, the waiver. The waiver, as you know, if it's approved, cannot be detrimental to public health or safety. The conditions cannot, that create the need for the waiver shall not generally apply to other property in the vicinity. The application of a provision will render the subdivision of land unfeasible. The granting of the waiver would not substantially conflict with the purpose of the UDC. So, there's a few factors in support of the waiver, mostly is that there is no existing sidewalk on either side of the property or any plans for, there's no projects currently in place for sidewalks on either side of the property. However, there are, RTA has three bus routes that pass nearby the area. There's a bus stop over here and the main Flower Bluff transfer station on the other side of SPID. So, the factors against the waiver, there's getting to be a long list, mostly because not all of the existing conditions of the property, but they were just rezoned with the purpose to increase density on this property with the similar characteristics that are going to require people that are going to be heavily dependent on pedestrian access. They're not going to be having vehicles, they're going to be having ride shares, it is for, I believe, an older community. So, they're going to be increasing the density and want to lessen the pedestrian access. So, that's what called it out as strange to us. Two of the items that they stated in their letter, which is in the memo packet that y'all have, is that the RTA bus stops aren't on West Lakeside, and they aren't. They're along NAS Drive. The bus goes by, but the stop itself is along NAS. The second main reason that they list in their letter is that the drainage ditch makes it unfeasible to put a sidewalk. And I have a feeling that ditch is this thing, but, and these are not Google Earth pictures, as noted last year. These were taken by staff. But, yeah, there's no drainage ditch. That would make a sidewalk not buildable. These items make the staff recommend disapproval. Of course, y'all may choose to follow or decline our recommendation, but if there's any questions, be glad to answer them.
Questions for staff?
I have a question on the, and you can go to the picture, but one of the recommendations, or the factors against, I guess, said sidewalk would make drainage better. How? How's sidewalk here improve the drainage? It said something like, going to help it get to the inlet down the road, but I don't, I don't see that.
Presently, there's, it's an empty lot, so essentially, any grading to, it looks like there's kind of separation, and if there's a lot of highs and lows, specifically a regrading or any work along the side. But, it's mostly that, it's mostly a response to the comment that there's a drainage ditch there and that this would be dangerous to put a sidewalk against a drainage ditch. If, that's where the sidewalk would actually help, is that there's actually not a ditch there. If there's any regrading to be done, it might help rather than, it's just rough terrain, it goes up and down. It's not, it's not the fault right now. It's not purposely roads for any sort of drainage at the current time.
So, these are the roads I hate as an engineer that has to design this stuff, because there should be a roadside ditch here, and there's not. So, the drainage actually just drains between the grass and the edge of the pavement, and erodes all of the area next to the pavement, because there should be a curb here. So, it's tough for me. Normally, when there's no curb and gutter, I'm going to say rubber stamp that waiver and let's do cash in lieu of if we have ever approved that, because putting the sidewalk there where the drainage needs to be is not a good thing. In this case, I still don't love it, because if you put a sidewalk there, you're now draining over a sidewalk onto the road, and you're still, it's not an ideal situation. The drainage doesn't have anywhere properly to drain, so you're just, they're going to regrade that, and they're going to have new dirt that's not, at least there, there's vegetation. So, they're going to regrade all that, disturb it, then there's going to be loose dirt that all just gets washed down the road. Almost, I mean, is it, I almost wonder if you can put, you know, you can't require them to put curb in here, right? So, I don't, I just...
And that's where it's coming. Sorry. And that's where it's getting into more of the design of the sidewalk. This is just whether it's required or not, not necessarily. We, of course, don't have any plans for it or how they're planning. We don't have a survey of the area by any means. What this review is really looking at is, this is, this is mention of those RTA bus stops in the area, and that, that blue area is the site. So, there's heavy pedestrian networks here for three routes that go in very different directions. And this has sidewalk right here, 167 feet from that corner. That's, that's the kind of review that we're making at this point. It's not a public improvement, that engineering eye that you're looking at it from. This is the requirement of a sidewalk for the safety of the area.
I understand that, and I, just as principle, having sidewalk would be great, because we want to have sidewalk rather than not have it. But I don't want to require them to build sidewalk that then creates a drainage problem, because what, what I see is wherever their driveway or driveways are, wherever they have a driveway crossing the sidewalk, now you're going to block the drainage, because it doesn't actually drain on the street, so it's, it's going to get stuck. And...
There will be further drainage plans also provided with their site development?
Well, there's no way to, there's nothing they can do, because it's not their infrastructure. So, no matter what, they've got to send their drainage to the street, and without curb and gutter here, it's going to flow along the edge of the street. So, wherever their driveway is coming up in their property, it's just, it's like the neighbor that doesn't put a covert in under their driveway, because there's no ditch to put a covert, so it's all just going to get blocked. I don't know if that changes whether or not you have a sidewalk, though.
Who's responsible for the drainage?
The site development does. So, when, as they turn in the, this, this whole area within their property line, which this sidewalk is part of their development, that's all looked at as part of their, their pre and post-half to balance.
Well, they're responsible for their drainage, but this is why I hate designing these as an engineer, because the city's responsible for the street, the developer's not responsible for improving the street, adding curb and gutter anything. So, he's going to drain, he's going to do what he needs to do.
That's what I'm saying. The city's not responsible for the drainage? Isn't that the easement? Isn't that your, our property?
Once he drains to the road.
If he's going to create that, future businesses that come in, which is a possibility, that means nobody's going to have a sidewalk in that whole thing, and no one's going to be able to drain, so their properties are going to flood all the time? Is that what you're trying to tell me?
No, I don't, I don't think it's going to flood. I think it's, you're going to have water ponding.
Well, we haven't had four or five interrains either, though, I mean, in quite a while. But when they do come, is that property going to be underwater, that whole property, that they can't even get in their parking lot?
No, that's not, that wouldn't be allowed. That's where the drainage plan makes sure that water is directed towards a way where it will drain. That's reviewed at the PI stage.
Why isn't there any ditches in the area, though?
It's just how some of these old roads were built. That's why I say, I hate it as an engineer, because you're trying to detain water and slow it down and then pour it out somewhere, and there's nowhere to pour it out to except above ground on the road.
Inheriting an old problem.
Right, so it's, it's tough, but I, sidewalk's not going to make it, I'm kind of on the fence if sidewalk's going to make the drainage situation worse or not. How does the drainage get to that inlet? Is there curb down the road?
This being a review of...
I just didn't have the time to.
This was more of a review of the sidewalk requirements. Again, this isn't a design of the, of the sidewalk. If there is a way to put in covert...
At this stage, if we require it, now they have to build it. And this has always been where, where I get, you know, have issue with requiring people to build a sidewalk in these situations, because then they come back and they have to figure out how to fit it in there and fit the drainage all within the right of way. And sometimes it's just not feasible, like when there's an actual ditch. In this case, I'm trying to figure out if I feel like there's, we're going to create a problem for them by requiring sidewalk be built in the right of way, where they also have to figure out some way to maintain drainage.
There is also, the requirement of the sidewalk is not that it has to be built in the right of way. There was something similar, trying to remember which job site it was, but where they essentially dedicated a pedestrian access along that frontage piece to where they could still put the sidewalk, because it actually did have a drainage ditch. And so, they, they moved the sidewalk more into their property and made a pedestrian easement.
I remember that.
There's many solutions that can be made.
I don't like those, because now you're telling a property owner, hey, we as the city didn't build curb and gutter, so now you have to put a sidewalk in your property and give up your private property, because you can't put it here, because our infrastructure is not complete. So, I don't, I don't like that solution.
I certainly consider...
But that is a solution, because when they did my street, they took my property and built the sidewalk. So, I don't have a problem making sure that they take up property.
They took your right of way?
They took part of my, my, my property to build that sidewalk that's there on Charles Drive. So, I don't have an issue with that. That should never be an issue for us. It's ADA compliance, and that's what we're required to do there for sidewalks, no matter what.
I have an issue with taking somebody's property. If yours was a right of way, taking...
Mine was taken. Mine was taken.
Don't know what the situation was there. If it was on a master plan and the city right of way was supposed to be a certain way, that's different.
I had a ditch.
Well, if they took an easement and took your property...
Took part of my property, because they couldn't do it without the ditch, because they had to widen the street for the bus routes to go into the Tullosamiba Primary School.
Well, what they're trying to do here is build, what, 22 unit, well, it's 22 units per acre. So, it's almost, what, an acre and a half?
Yes.
So, we're talking 33 units?
Yes.
We're going to have a lot more density there?
Absolutely.
We're going to have a lot more kids, everybody walking, and fact of the matter is, what you were saying, the bus stop, or it's just, what, 500 feet?
Yeah, from the farthest point, 167 from the nearest.
For these people that are going to have to walk wherever, they're going to need access, they're going to have to, or riding bikes. There's nothing out there. So, how long, how large is the street? How many feet is the street right now?
Not large, and that, to that point, there's going to be traffic sitting here, standing right here.
Having to walk on the road, or on the grass, or ride the bike on there, or, you know...
I wanted to say this was 20. Correct, and to that point of increasing that density with these types of developments, similar developments by the same owner, is aiming towards that population that don't have cars. So, the front is going to be maybe a parking lot or maybe open space, but in, this property will be lined up with a lot of people looking to go somewhere.
Question. Did the applicant, have they submitted any kind of preliminary layout, site plan?
In the zoning case, they did.
Sorry. In the zoning case, they did.
Let's bring that up and take a look, and, because I've seen situations where, and Mike, you know, where you can do like a, a sawtooth curb, if you've got paving up against a sidewalk, and then, you know, some kind of covers and drainage through the sidewalk to get the water over to the street, but it just kind of depends on how they have the development laid out.
Well, my, my biggest concern here is, now that detention is required, they're going to take this undeveloped land, they're going to pave it fully, almost fully, probably, because they're packing density in here. So, they're going to have detention. Well, the only way to typically detain is by having a pond, which means you're digging a hole, and to outfill that, you got to be lower, which means they might end up having to dig a ditch on the side of the road, where there's not currently one, because they're just deeper than, than the ground is now. And then they might have to go tie into that storm. If they do that, now, now we have the issue with the ditch and the sidewalk. So, that's, I'm kind of curious, when they're saying, I know they said there is a ditch, there's not really a ditch there today, but that's really my concern. If they're, you know, are they going to need a ditch? Because they have to construct one for their drainage just due to elevation, and now we have a sidewalk and a ditch situation, but... I guess they're kind of doing that to themselves.
Go ahead and pull up that site plan.
She's pulling it up now.
Oh, sorry.
Didn't have that pulled up. That was covered in the zoning case, which was not presented today.
Does anybody else have thoughts on it one way or the other that you'd like to share while they pull this up? Because I'm on the fence. Honestly, I'm kind of leaning towards just saying, build the sidewalk and figure it out, engineering wise.
I think, I think there's a really good argument for putting the sidewalk. We grant a lot of sidewalk waivers in Flower Bluff because of the, the fact that all those roads were built to rural standards prior to annexation.
Those are usually on the other side of the highway, though, where there are ditches. This is, this is, the other side is different, and a lot of people do walk in this area.
And I, and I see, I see a lot of, you know, whether you want to call it gentrification or, you know, infill on that side of, of South Powder Allen Drive, starting to occur now. And...
This area is not as busy, but my office is down the road, and the neighborhood's kind of to the top of that image. A lot of those people walk down to get to SPID to go to the bus stop, I mean, constantly.
Yeah, I guarantee you, once, once this development comes in, and I, who owns that piece of property that you're hovering over right there?
I want to say it was a church, if I remember correctly.
Whenever you had a...
Okay. It's under the waivers.
I'm on the fence, too, and I see both sides. I see the drainage issue and I also see the pedestrian access issue. And I think, in this case, the pedestrian access issue outweighs the drainage. I usually have a problem when, when a piece of property is, is right in the middle of a street, and it takes, you're going to, you have so long to get to the next sidewalk. This one is 167 feet, which is not ideal. I still wish there was a connection to that NAS driveway, I mean, sidewalk. But the fact that it's so close to the intersection with so many bus stops makes me lean towards disapproving the waiver.
I agree with you. Do we have a drawing that shows... I I agree with you. Do we have a drawing that shows the right of way relative to the existing street? In other words, how much room is there between the edge of existing pavement and the right of way?
Sure, I can try to, G I S isn't gonna be accurate, but that's as close as I'm gonna be able.
I didn't, I didn't really look at that.
Actually, that's not gonna show it properly. The plot, the plot would kinda show it. Because drainage issues can be solved in a variety of ways, and there's, um.
I just think, I think they're gonna end up having to dig a ditch there if they, if it's.
Well, one one saving grace, Mike, is that, um, it's not, you know, just a sea of impervious cover.
Yeah, that's what I was just looking at. That that's, but they could do that, we don't know. But are they, so what does that say, twenty-five feet? Can you go up to the?
This kind of, uh, just sorry, to the point that Lermell was making earlier about the if this this area isn't gonna be used anyway, so to make a pedestrian easement here with a sidewalk, they're not losing anything.
But they are, because that that Y R, you can't build a building in it, but you can build parking lots, and that happens all the time.
Which they weren't planning to, because they don't plan to have, um, many people here.
You're right. What's that dimension to the center line on there? Kind of at the top.
It is twenty-five to the center line.
Six fifty.
And then plus five. And plus twenty.
I think there's enough room.
Because that's a skinny street, assuming it's center. I'm satisfied.
Okay, any other questions for staff?
Let's see if this has a dimension on it. Not for this part, but if it's, if it's scaled right, it looks like that lines up with the Y R, so they're using it just as green space.
Those C cans are. Ten foot wide?
Aren't they?
Yeah, I guess so.
But that, but if if they are, then that's not really to scale. But, um.
Maybe maybe they're eight feet. Because those look like three eights.
Yeah, that'd be three eights.
That makes sense.
Can we make a motion? Are you public hearing?
Uh, I gotta open it up, just for. Uh, okay, if there's no other comments for staff or questions for staff, I'll open up the public hearing on item number three. Anybody speak on that? I see none. So with that, um, if there's no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we pause. Do I approve the item as presented because you said deny? We deny the waiver as presented.
Okay.
Second.
For clarity, we are making a motion and voting on denying the applicant's waiver for a sidewalk.
Correct.
For for the removal of a sidewalk. So with that, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Moving on to the director's report.
Hey, Al. Did I play him on TV? Uh, Commissioner's Chair, glad everybody survived survived Super Tuesday. We are all here to rejoice. Uh, so what we're gonna pr- uh, present today is is again Al's commitment to y'all to talk about what is going on in C I C. And those presentations that have already happened. The presentation tonight is gonna be a little bit condensed version of the stormwater presentation. Uh, we will go to C I C, uh, March twenty-eighth to start the impact fee discussion. So these previous, uh, presentations will be discussed at that time. This was given back in October of of last year, if I believe, uh, correctly. So again, the work to date, so the draft, uh, fee is kind of more here to talk about, um, the citywide master plan's been done. Again, within that, there was looking at different watersheds. Uh, part of that, um, study was obviously ours with Pape Dawson, but they also worked with the county, who was doing a tri county study as well, uh, so that was incorporated as part, you know, we worked together, so we weren't overlapping and, you know, just making it more efficient. But we use their data, they used our data, so both studies, uh, I think came out pretty well. I'm not an engineer, but looks good. Um, so the land use assumptions, which is part of the impact fee study, uh, and the master plan study, came out of that as well as capital improvement plan, so the capital improvement plan, if we discuss and want to go to an impact fee is required by state law, so that, uh, led us to a number of improvements, and which we'll talk about here in a little bit. And then we have some options, like anything for addressing that impact fee. So this is the big one. So like any impact fee, you have a service area. Um, or potential impact fee, you have a service area, so roads by state law has to be every six miles, so there's twenty-two service areas. Wastewater is by your wastewater plant, so we have six proposed service areas. Water, we really only have one plant, but since we have two, uh, levels, and I forget the term right now, but there's two pressure levels, we did two water. What the proposal is here is, uh, Oso Creek being really the main and only watershed. We do have some other minor watersheds, but this is where the focus would land for this discussion. Again, as we talked about service areas and land use, this is the total acreage for that watershed. Uh, they have laid out a an existing, uh, existing acres and the types of use and how that may change after ten years. Like any capital improvement plan or master plan is part of this, uh, whole process, everything's in ten-year increments. So you can see there, the overwhelming majority in this area is undeveloped. As you go west, it's all farmland. So you'll see that in that calculation, about eighty percent. Yeah, about eighty percent currently is undeveloped, and that ten-year plan, it goes down to about sixty-seven percent. So with the projects that were discussed in the Oso Basin, it's kind of a little map. I got a bigger map, a couple slides after this, but basically, within this basin, it's limited to five projects rather than, you know, a whole bunch of other projects. These are five main projects that will help um, the stormwater problems and issues in this area. There are a lot of numbers up here, but primarily, the total number is a hundred and forty-three million, uh, each project. Uh, so like Oso One is a channel improvement to the main channel along the center line of Oso Creek from La Voya down. Uh, and again, you'll see a better picture here in a sec. Let me just skip to that. So that Oso One is that main, uh, tributary that comes down to the outlet. Oso Two project is channel improvements along London Ditch from Crosstown to Oso Creek. Oso Three is channel improvements to widen and deepen the main channel along Oso Creek from forty-four down to La Voya Creek. Uh, Oso Four is improvements to Clarkwood, uh, from fourteen to forty-four. And then Oso Five is a channel improvements along the center line of West Oso Creek. Uh, and again, a lot of what you'll see in those proposals is things utilizing the La Voya Creek project that's also, uh, gonna help with the stormwater. That's a grant that's been done and is out to out to bid. Bless you.
One thing, uh, if back up to that slide where we're looking at the
The map?
Bigger, yeah. So one thing that's always kinda boggled my mind, and maybe Mike can help me out here, um, is with regards to widening and deepening, um, Oso Creek when at, you know, at at resting, in its resting state, there's a significant portion of Oso Creek that is at sea level. So when you have something that's at sea level and you're, you know, widening, eh, deepening, I don't know anything. Uh, yeah, help me understand how widening and deepening Oso Creek helps with our drainage solutions.
Again, I'm not an engineer and I didn't sleep at a Holiday Inn, but for the most part, it's capacity issues as the flow comes down and comes into the bay. If you've got a narrow channel flowing into the bay, that creates backup further north, especially in this situation. So by utilizing, uh, three, four, and five, and widening those, it slows the flow down into one, which is the main expanse. Uh, there's been discussion outside of this with La Voya Creek and how that will work, as well as potential, um, regional mitigation, uh, in those areas, but that's not part of this discussion.
Because deepening, deepening's the one that really kinda sticks in my craw, like, you know, what what does it help to deepen it, you know, you're already at sea level? And and then also, one of the things that, one of the questions that I personally asked during our, um, our our discussion with council and and, um, the Pape Dawson presentation was, uh, what, you know, what are, what improvements are being scheduled for, you know, the actual Oso Bay? Because, and and the answer was none.
Right.
Because Oso Bay, you know, is continually getting shallower and based on, you know, sediment deposits and silting from these drainage projects happening in Oso Creek, so.
You're gonna have silting no matter what, and it's gonna come through any, be it water across the King Ranch, water through the Oso, you'll even have silt from improved streets. I mean, you have sand and dirt that'll collect. It's not gonna be obviously as as much. But those particular projects in unison, the main thing is help slow flow to the bay. Um, I think, you know, we even had some discussions, and I think you may have been in that one, where you're talking about concreting things. Well, the more you concrete, the faster it flows.
Yeah.
So you wanna build areas that it can slow down. Um, again, that three, four, and five, a lot of people don't think that far west where there isn't any real development's gonna affect further south, but it does. Um, ultimately, you're kind of pinched with what you can do with the Oso itself and the bay itself. Uh, taking on a a silt project for the bay would be just an egregious amount of money, I would I would assume.
Yeah, well, just, you know, conversations about, you know, I remember a time when water was freely flowing underneath the mud bridge. And, um, now it's tidal, whether or not there's water flow underneath there. So, um, I just, I I have concerns about, and I and I fully appreciate, you know, widening it, uh, but, you know, I'll leave that up to the engineers, but it's just something that I think about.
Those engineers are smart guys.
Yeah. He's silent and playing with his phone.
Sorry. Candy Crush. Candy Crush is better than me, anyway, come on. Uh, so again, what we talked about, the geography options, we were just talking about, so, um, you could utilize multiple service areas based on the legislation. I think for what we have, we're gonna recommend that one because it provides the best best option. Again, all the land within that, uh, city boundary and E T J can be incorporated. Obviously, each service area, if you have multiples, they're gonna have its own calculations, its own schedules, so on and so forth. And again, once you have a whole lot of areas, hint hint to the road, it becomes difficult to make sure that those things, um, line up in our account of four. So we've already seen the map. Again, this is option one. It's a one stormwater service area. You will see a split up in the northwest, but that's E T J. Uh, so our E T E T J jumps, but all the projects will be in this lower portion of the basin. Again, this is, one service area is the easiest to implement. Uh, you'll have the projects that I mentioned, they're all in that service area to accommodate the development in the, uh, watershed. And again, the the benefits, three, four, and five, again, I I point that out more than once. A lot of people are saying, why would you do something out in the middle of nowhere? It really affects the downstream. So you could do an option two, um, which would split the service area. This hypothetical boundary is arbitrary. There's nothing there that says it has to be this area. You would just, you would use either another tributary, you would use a highway, a census tract, whatever. You can just arbitrarily split that up. And again, that would put three, four, and five in one, and one in two and another. No, 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 we we're just trying to throw everything out there for discussion. Again, the the benefit, what we would say is option one, single service area, easy to manage, easy to process, easy to pretty much, that's what it is. Uh, what this does has, it does have limitations, again, based on development, so let's say, for instance, in that northern section, there may not be as much development, so they're not gonna have, you know, the revenue from those fees to help pay for those projects. Three, this becomes again more complicated, but it it is an option, when we wanna point out all the options. You would have the entire service area as one. You would have basin two, which is the lower basin, and basin three, which is that upper basin. If you did a multi-basin type of option, you would pay a fee for the entire, and then as you go into two, you'd pay two and one. If you went three, you'd have three, two, and one as as a fee. Again, it's a, it's difficult, uh, you'll pay more in those other areas, and yet we think it's just easier to maintain one, um, service area. So we get into lovely spreadsheets. Again, what this does is if you're still in that option three, if you look at that lower portion, if you're developing in an area not in basin two or three, you're gonna pay, and these numbers are theoretical numbers at this point. The numbers won't be presented until the twenty-eighth. Um, draft numbers, we'll say. Uh, but if you do in basin two, you jump because you're paying the basin two fee and basin one, and then if you jumped in, if you're developing a basin three, you'd actually pay all three, so there's an increase in fees if you're to do it with that option. Again, alternative impact schedules. This, assuming one, uh, use watershed, the draft number comes out to, um, thirty fifty-four per thousand square foot. We're utilizing the K S F as what the majority of other cities do. Um, our sister city, Port Aransas, just passed in December, their stormwater fee, they did it per square foot, which was seven cents, and we'll have, I'll show that later. Uh, but everybody, almost everybody else does a thousand square foot. Um, again, based on a, a E E R U or an E D U equivalent, uh, typical residential units, about thirty-two hundred square feet, and that'd be about a hundred per lot per E R U. So again, the recommendation at that time was to adopt the stormwater fees at that fifty percent revenue credit, which is, uh, state law. Uh, Oso Creek watershed just have it as the one service area, makes it neat, clean, and organized for everybody to understand, implement, manage, you know, future work. Uh, and again, the impacts fee schedule will be at that K S F, the thousand square feet.
I got a question on that. Again, have y'all not discussed, is this the actual recommendation for how to, how the fee would be, or is that still?
No, 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 this was the first throw at C I C. The recommendation will happen on the twenty-eighth.
Are they, it's one of the things that they still have to decide. I know they're gonna decide the amount, I know that, but are they still, is it still up in the air? It's gonna be just per square footage, or?
Yeah, I mean.
Or per unit, or a combination, or something?
Yeah, so here's an example, so this is kinda where it's getting at. So if we did per square foot, if you just multiply it by a thousand, it's the same thing.
Right, but I mean, because there's other options for doing, you know, if you have a five hundred acre subdivision or something, it's different. You have a bunch of green space because you did a twenty acre lake, it's different. So if there's other options other cities have where you can do it like by unit, too, so there's like different options for how to pay it?
You could, again, the main thing with stormwater and drainage control is the impervious cover aspect. Because you could do a thirty-story building that had limited impervious cover. You got a ton of E R Us, but you're really not putting off a whole lot of drainage. So you wanna affect the impervious cover, uh, development rather than the the density of that development for the stormwater fee.
I hear that.
Water and wastewater, that's that's a different discussion.
Not implemented. I'll just, uh, new development, you can look at their plans, but
Yeah.
Are you gonna apply, kinda like the previous stormwater fee, just make an assumption for every residence at like seventy percent impervious, or sixty, or whatever, and just and let people protest, or how does that work?
Well, that's a whole different thing, but yeah, where this has, so a- as an example, we we are having, um, you know, the single watershed fifty percent at the K S F. So we had four residential impervious cover, um, ratios, anywhere from ten to sixty-five percent. That mixed use and the non-residential, those tend to be higher. You know, your commercial businesses have an enormous amount of impervious cover compared to a residential development. So they have a a higher ratio, but the impact fee, the proposed impact fee that'll be discussed is how do those ratios work together with the projects that are needed in the capital improvement plan? And then at that point, how do we assess that? Do we, do we bring in separate feing for a commercial-type business, even though it's really impervious cover? If it's impervious cover here and it's impervious cover there, almost every city does it as as one fee. I can't speak for Austin, they're not on here, and I know you love Austin, but.
Twenty-five percent impervious coverage.
Is what they charge everybody?
That's the maximum that you can cover a, a non-covenant, uh, you know, protected piece of dirt.
Interesting, because that seems impossible.
You got an acre, you can pay the quarter.
I would say like with the, because this is not really an impact fee thing that they're gonna discuss at CAC, I think, but like if you decide all residential's gonna get charged at sixty percent unless they come say something, but like some of these ones, especially like on Padre Island, they'll pave their whole driveway, so they're probably closer to eighty or ninety percent, but I don't know how, if y'all are...
Well, remember, the impact fee is, and part of that discussion that we'll have on the twenty-eighth is the impact fee, well, potentially, we'll, I'll address that right now. So an island resident, their plat was probably done in sixty-seven or seventy-two when the most of the plats were done out there, they're exempt from impact fees.
Yeah.
Cause everything on an impact fee by state law is based on the plat date. So if you've platted before, let's just say for grins, this goes to council and council's gonna approve an impact fee for August first of twenty-twenty-five. As long as you plat before then, you don't have to pay any impact fees.
Okay, that actually brings up a huge question I had, because one thing I was told, and I wanted to ask you if this was correct, that it wasn't just the plating date, but there would be like a one-year, so say, I have a developer who plats today a forty-lock subdivision, or whatever it is, and then starts pulling building permits. I, what I was told is after a one-year grace period, the next building permit you pull, you will have the impact fee. So will there be impact fees?
Impact fees are based on plat date, hundred percent.
Are they only for plating, or when you pull a building permit, can you pay?
The building permit, the impact fee that if, if policy dictates, after discussion on the twenty-eighth, if policy dictates that the impact fee is charged at the building permit, the building permit, impact fee is determined on the plat date.
So if a, if a development's plat was filed before impact fees were implemented, then no building permit will ever have a...
Correct. There, there'll always be a rush.
Y'all hiring extra staff for all the classes that are gonna come in?
Well, this kick-ass staff does them quickly, we don't need more staff.
I don't think it'll happen that way, just because of...
Well, I, it's already happening, a lot of my clients are rush, rush, rush to get platted before impact fees.
Well, and again, impact fees may not take, there may be a date of a year, it could be six months, it could be a year, it could be two years. I mean, that's council's decision ultimately, when that's gonna be implemented.
When the grandfather thing would kick in?
Grandfather, that word doesn't exist.
Well, I mean, you're saying it's not when council adopts, it's what date they set?
Effective date. And again, they do that specifically for projects that may be in the pipeline. If I'm thinking about developing and they're gonna throw an impact fee, I mean, good guidance would be, hey, guys that are in, much like the building code, I mean, we, we adopted the building code, we gave it a year.
That's already budgeted, everything.
Exactly.
Okay.
And again, that's our recommendation as well, is, is to give time for those things to happen. Other cities that have done this, they do have a rush. Now, I don't think it'll be like a New Braunfels rush when they quadrupled their fees, but it'll be, you know, we'll get some activity, for sure. Again, this is just kind of a description of what other people, other cities have. The fee that we're discussing, again, is lower than the other, others that are here, uh, Portland to our north, uh, Port Aransas to our east.
So they're all KSF?
Yes.
Wow.
So this is based, so the, Portland is a square foot, but if you look at the first asterix, it's per a thousand square feet, is how we determine the fee, so we could easily compare it. Port Aransas is the same way, they're seven cents a square foot. So at a thousand square feet, it'd be seventy dollars KSF. And then Houston down there on the bottom, they're kind of the oldest, they, uh, they passed theirs in twenty thirteen, I believe. So that's really it, again, high level, I mean, we got into the weeds on this one for sure, uh, much like we have with the other presentations, but as we continue to go through and, and have, uh, these meetings, obviously, Al will come back and, or myself will come back and, uh, brief you on these. Again, CAC meeting on the twenty-eighth is where we'll really start to chew on the actual fee, um, or fees, and then we'll have that update for you guys after that.
When does the public roadshow start? Cause I've got some clients and then just other community members I run into that are asking when they're gonna start having public meetings.
So we are gonna start the district engagement like we did for the plans after CAC has come up with a proposed recommendation to council.
Maybe late April or something?
More than likely May, late April, early May. Because when we go on the roadshow, we wanna make sure that the citizens know what the recommendation's gonna be, rather than go out and talk about all this stuff, and then the recommendation be something completely different.
Are you still thinking council in May, or does that look like it's...
It's June or July.
June or July, okay. Sorry, I missed the last planning commission.
And again, this, this requires multiple hearings, uh, multiple reads, like other stuff. We have to have, uh, an advan, we have to go to council thirty, at least thirty days. Is it at least or minimum thirty days? We have to go to council thirty days ahead to announce that we're coming back to council in at least thirty days. So we'll be at council a minimum of three times. We're actually gonna do a fourth, an extra night meeting. We've got a lot of people say, hey, I can't come during the day, I wanna, I wanna, you know, see and hear this at night in front of council. So we're gonna have four council meetings on it.
Okay. And I assume we'll get this, but just to make sure, will, will we all get an email that says, here's the dates of the public meetings, so we can send that out to anybody who might need it?
When they're final, we'll, we'll get those dates, we actually were working on them today.
Thank you.
And the, the fees are going to vary service area to service area, right?
Well, for stormwater, again, we're recommending one, other service areas could vary. But again, the, the recommendation could be to keep them, you know, static across the different service areas.
Just, I mean, from a practical standpoint, and which kind of surprises me, um, well, it's actually Portland, but, so London area, where we're gonna see most of the growth, is black clay. And black clay turns into impervious coverage after about an inch and a half of rain. The island, sand. And I could sit there with a water hose and dump it onto the sand all day long and never get more than an inch of water.
Well, under the basin, the island wouldn't even be part of it, so...
So that, okay.
Again, the impact fee, if one were adopted, would be within that service area.
Okay.
So downtown would be out of it, uh, the majority of the bluff would be out of it, the island would be out of it. Uh, it's mainly west of SPID, you know, all the way to seventy-seven.
And are, are industrial developments that are, um, within a, an, an industrial district, are they, are they going to be exempt from impact fees?
They don't normally plat, uh, because they don't really, they're outside the city limits, so they don't need building permits, and so they're, 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 it's rare for them to subdivide property, they just go vertical. But if they were to plat, then, um, impact fees can be assessed.
And again, when you talk about how it's...
But again, uh, it depends, it depends on the, on the type of, uh, impact fee, cause, I guess we, we would, for water, wastewater, we would collect it at meter hookup, but not necessarily for building permit, because they don't get building permits.
I'm just thinking about, um, the, you know, the oddball stuff in San Pat County that's within the city of Corpus Christi.
If they're, if they have an industrial agreement, they're outside of DSD purview.
Yeah.
I mean, they, they wouldn't, they don't plat, that's the main thing which would talk about, uh, impact fees, they're all assessed based on plat date. So if they don't plat, they don't go through that process.
In San Pat, there probably wouldn't be any service areas.
Oh, well, true. I mean, if we're specifically, if we talk about drainage, it's only on the south side, water's just within the city limits in ETJ, so it would have to be close. Now, we do have some city limits that goes up there, but most of that, I think, is Exxon?
Yeah, that's...
One of the plants.
That's, I'm just thinking of, cause obviously, um, Portland with their, you know, Whopper job, they're, you know, three or four times everybody else, um, and I would assume that a lot of that has to do with their, you know, they're building out in Black Farm mud, just like we are in London.
Well, and, and our understanding of the Portland ordinance is they have multiple areas, we're only looking at one, and they only fee in one of the six areas. So, I mean, they probably could've just done one, but...
Right.
They felt the need to split up, depending on how it drains out. But with us, it would just be, for drainage, it would just be one fee.
Have y'all talked to them, or has anybody in CAC about why their fee is someone higher than all the other people?
Briefly, uh, they just had a, a different way of looking at things. I can't, I can't speak for Portland.
There wasn't a big red flag, oh, we have this major thing, and this is why, that's just how they came up?
Well, again, fee, fees are driven by capital improvement. So they may have adopted a, a substantial capital improvement plan, I don't know what kind of drainage they have, have out in those farm fields, they may have nothing. And that really, that increased cost is what leads to those fees. Alright. So again, we, we meet with, uh, CAC on the twenty-eighth, but, uh, we'll continue to come back and brief you on what has already been done, and then as things come through, um, Al and myself will brief you on those CAC meetings. Again, the summer is where everything kind of comes to, uh, Judgment Day, but, uh, we'll have another, um, joint meeting, but this time, uh, it'll be planning commission, city council, and CAC at the same meeting. So we'll get a big room for that.
Okay.
We get to see what this is like?
You see what?
What it's like over there across the street?
Which one? Oh, RTA? No, we need a bigger room than that. It's gonna be ABC or the FEMA Dome, we've gotta have something with some space.
Alright, well, we appreciate it.
Alright, thank you guys.
Thanks, Mike. Alright, well, if there's no any, uh, any other business or future agenda items, I will adjourn this meeting.